Good morning, everybody. I hope you can hear me and thank you for joining us. It is 9:31 and welcome to the virtual town hall. Most of you are familiar with how this will go this morning, but just to let everybody know, we are recording the town hall. We will share that recording in CC Daily on Monday for those who are unable to attend or for those who would like to watch it again. After President Hughes, AVP Ogden, and VP Enright give their presentation, we will open it up to the Q and A. We have received a couple of dozen questions. Many of them are the same or similar, and so we will try to address as many as we can. If we do not get to a question, then we will continue to answer those the best we can and provide that information in CC Daily or if appropriate to an individual employee. And so why don't we get started right away? And it's my pleasure to introduce President Meghan Hughes.
Thank you so much, Amy, and thank you to everybody for joining us today. Here we are virtually despite the very real challenges that COVID now with the Delta variant continues to bring to our lives. I'm really looking forward to welcoming our faculty back a week from today at opening day and seeing so many faculty and staff from across our four campuses for the first time in a very long time. We're working hard, all of us, I know, together to bring everyone back to campus safely and to enroll as many students as we possibly can. As you know, we're going to cover two topics today. And before I outline our goals with today's town hall, I'd like to share what to anticipate with future town hall topics. I think we should anticipate, we will continue to offer these actually virtually. We're seeing attendance able to be higher when folks can join in this format. And we are going to take a targeted approach to really timely topics, just as you're seeing today, with our focus on how we're going to come back to campus and what our enrollment position looks like. So with that said, look for September communications about a town hall that will be led by Vice President Alberton and me. That town hall is going to focus on our current financial position at that date and time, where we are with enrollment. It will then look at the federal relief dollars that have come from Washington in response to this pandemic and how we as a community can make wise investments in CCRI with those monies. Vice President Alberton and her team will be leading college-wide conversations beginning in September so that we can gather input from all of you about how we can make investments to set up the college and our students for near-term stability and long-term success. In addition to those conversations, Vice President Costigan will continue her regular faculty meetings, and I encourage you all to bring your suggestions for topics to her office. So the first topic today, which will be led by Associate Vice President Ogden, is this return to campus plan. And my reflections here and really what I'm just asking all of us to do together, expect that this return is going to be bumpy. It's been a year and a half since we were together with thousands of students and thousands of employees, and we, like colleges around the world, are learning and planning how to do this well in live time. And so please trust that we are going to work really hard to get it right and to get it smooth as quickly as possible. And what I'm asking all of us to be is just patient. The questions submitted, I reviewed them, they make perfect sense, as Amy outlined, we'll answer them today along with a detailed presentation of our current plan for return. You know, the adjective there, "current," I think has real significance. I think we all know this, we're experiencing this in our home lives, in our community lives. This variant is causing the entire world to adjust our plans really by the day. And what I have seen this college do since March 13th of 2020 is just really work with that need to be adaptable, and for that, I am really grateful. So I want to emphasize that we will benefit, I think, this whole community from three things, from everyone who is part of this college. First, suggestions and feedback for how to improve. We definitely do not have all the answers, there's not a college in the world that does. Everyone listening on this call sees and experiences a particular part of the college. Please, if you have an idea for how we can do it better, bring it straight to Alix, and she's going to work with you and your teams to figure out if we can make those kinds of changes to make it better for everybody. Second, please actively participate and comply with the actions we all need to take in order to together create a safe college environment. One really basic just observation I can make, having been back at the college since April regularly, daily, we got to wear our masks. So I know they get hot, keeping those masks on according to the protocols that are outlined is just going to be really important to keeping everybody safe. And then finally, and third, patience. Patience with yourself, patience with each other, with our students, and with the team that is led by Alix, who is trying, like other colleges around the world, to respond to a crisis that is new to all of us. So the second topic today is the status of our enrollment for this fall and the strategy that Amy Kasserick, who's the Dean of our Enrollment, Associate Vice President Greg LaPointe, and Vice President Sarah Enright, and the entire college really, is actively deploying in order to enroll many more Rhode Islanders into CCRI this fall. Sarah's going to walk us through an overview momentarily, and I simply want to offer the following, you know, very brief reflections. I know that every single one of us understands why it matters that we enroll Rhode Islanders into this college. We know that without a credential beyond high school, Rhode Islanders are going to struggle to secure employment and almost certainly will secure low-wage employment with no clear path to upward mobility. So we have this ongoing social imperative to work as hard as we possibly can to support Rhode Islanders enrolling here and succeeding, and that's what all of you do every day. So I'm stating the obvious, I think it's important that we come back and just really sort of center ourselves, sort of why do we come to work every day and why, what's the first principle for why we're focused on enrolling? With this piece, what does our data tell us about students across the United States? It tells us that our Black and Brown students and our low-income students have been hit hardest by COVID and therefore are disproportionately lower enrolled at this point. So as I know we're working hard together to become a genuinely and increasingly anti-racist college, I'm really asking that we come together and really double down on supporting the students who themselves and their families and communities have been hurt the most. So the second, what else do we know about why we're so focused on enrollment? We know that a significant portion, roughly 50%, of our revenue comes from tuition dollars. It's essential to this college's financial health, and therefore, we must also do everything we can to together produce the strongest possible enrollment numbers for this year. So put simply, we rely on student tuition for financial stability, and we must work hard together to have a robust year. So two points I want to make on this topic. As I said earlier, Vice President Alberton will lead us through a discussion next month. She's going to review our current financial position at that time and then explain how those federal COVID relief dollars can be spent. So as she begins to walk us through that process, you know, the goal really is going to have, I think, two objectives. One, so that we all understand what are the rules, what are we allowed to do with that funding, what are some forgone sort of investments that have already been made, things like forgiving student debt, providing increased student scholarship in order to strengthen our enrollment position. So the first objective is just to show us what's possible, what's allowable, what decisions have already been made. And then the second part is really kicking off, what are the good ideas this entire college has for how we invest the dollars that we have to invest? I really ask that in advance of that town hall, please submit questions for Kristen and her team to respond to. I know Amy and her team will set up that platform, that mechanism, so that everyone's aware of when these conversations are taking place and a way for you to easily submit your questions. Second, I know that employees are concerned about the threat of layoffs, and I want to address that concern here. Having carefully reviewed both our enrollment data and the allowable use of federal relief funds, I am confident we will not be laying off employees this fall. I am optimistic that as we continue to recover from this pandemic and we continue to recover students and our enrollment numbers increase, we will improve our financial stability over the midterm and the long term, and I'm optimistic about that recovery. So as we look beyond this year and we look into this year, it is my focus and promise to work with all of you, with our enrollment teams and with our budget office, to avoid circumstances that would require the possibility of future layoffs. To be clear, I don't see that in our path, and I think we all need to continue to work really hard to position this college for financial stability. Like colleges across the United States, we must remain vigilant and continue to do everything in our power, as I know you all do every single day, to welcome students and to support them staying with us once they get here. If we can do this, our financial stability is strengthened. And I want to just take a brief moment to say, I think one of the things that most struck me, inspired me, and made me grateful to work where I come to work every day, is the number of questions that evidenced such an authentic concern for the safety and well-being of our students and how we design a plan to, once our students come back in the fall, keep them here safely and keep our fellow employee community members safe. So I thank you for that. In closing, I'm going to turn it over to Alix Ogden for our return to campus plan and then Sarah Enright for our enrollment presentation. Despite this pandemic that is continuing, that continues to stress our college, our communities, our state, our country, and the whole world, I am genuinely optimistic about CCRI. It is a place, all of you, that have figured out how to keep running, to keep at this work, to keep educating Rhode Islanders despite everything COVID has thrown at us and continues to throw at us. For that, every single one of you has my eternal admiration and my gratitude. So I look forward to seeing as many of you as possible next week at opening day, and I look forward to a strong fall. Thanks so much for coming to the conversation this morning.
Thank you, Meghan. And now AVP Ogden, the floor is yours, and I will start sharing our screen.
Great, thank you.
Give me a second.
Sure.
Okay. Somebody tell me that you can see the screen.
We can see it, I know that I can, Sarah's nodding.
I can see it.
Great. Well, good morning, everyone, and thanks for coming. And we've read your questions, we're looking forward to answering them. This is kind of framework for what, where things are right now. As President Hughes very clearly said, things are changing every day, and we're having to be, you know, adapt and be flexible, and we're certainly going to be asking that of you as we go into the fall season and the fall semester. So I'll start off with a little bit of just the context in Rhode Island. Amy, if you could go to the next slide, please.
Bear with me.
It's okay.
There we go.
Okay. So I just, a lot of this information is going to be very familiar to everyone who is here at the town hall. We have a state that's in a current state of, it's called high transmission. As of yesterday, the number was 177 positive cases per 100,000 people, and that's a 3.6 positivity rate this week. As you know, it goes up and down each day, but as published on the Department of Health website. So they are tracking what are called breakthrough cases, so fully vaccinated people that end up with COVID, and that's still, it's 0.35%. And I think in a state like Rhode Island, that's so small, a lot of people do know people who had breakthrough cases. I think it's important to come back to the fact that vaccinations are working, they're still our best defense against COVID and against the Delta variant. And so obviously, we'll keep tracking that, there's tons of information in the news right now about booster shots. But I think it's really important to focus on the best way to protect you and your family and our students and our community is to get vaccinated. With the states, so you know, all colleges and universities in the state have vaccine mandates of some kind. Sometimes they include faculty and staff, sometimes they don't, but they've all taken steps around vaccine mandates. The governor has made a requirement for vaccinations for state-licensed healthcare facilities by October 1st and has recommended K-12 masks. The Council on Elementary and Secondary Education voted to require it. There's still a ton of questions around all of these actions, again, kind of as people are responding and trying to give, frankly, I think, trying to give good, you know, guidance around what we should be doing as a collective, as a state. But I think, you know, those are the kinds of things that are really changing on a day-to-day basis. If we could go to the next slide, please. Okay, where are we right now? So we have been asking students who, to provide documentation or a request for an exemption to Medicat. So that's our medical services verification provider. And as of yesterday, 56% of students enrolled for in-person learning have provided that, and every day that number is increasing. We're really encouraging students to do that. It's going to be a very effective tool for us. And we have approximately a 6% exemption rate. So in talking with others, I think we're kind of similarly situated as other higher ed's in terms of the ones that are requiring this enrollment and in terms of percentage of exemptions. We have offered 26 vaccination clinics on all, you know, total on all campus, but they've been on all campuses by the end of August. I really think we have made every opportunity, and we've taken advantage of our enrollment days, to encourage students who are coming in for the first time to kind of do all their things to be ready for school, to do it right then. And we provided a $200 incentive to students that do so, and that seems to have been an effective tool. We're also asked for faculty and staff, we've also been asking faculty and staff to kind of what we call register their vaccinations with the college. 515 faculty and staff have done so, which is a great, it's a great number, and we're going to be encouraging more of that. So right now, we have the ability to, even if we just take a picture of your vaccination card and your, some ID preferably, your CCRID that has your VIN or ID number on it, and so it takes very short amount of time, and we just snap a picture and send you on your way. But it will be really helpful for a couple different reasons. We're creating FastPass entry into the college for people who have provided proof of vaccination. You'll get a sticker that demonstrates that your vaccination has been registered, and so that means you will not be waiting, it potentially aligns to get screened, so you won't have to get screened every day. And if you're exposed, you actually don't have to quarantine. So there are benefits of doing this, it helps with our contact tracing. And what we do know is what we think, we suspect is true for our faculty and staff, which is in the state, you know, 18 and over 70, over 70% actually are fully vaccinated. And that's even, it's even higher among the, I would put myself in this category, you know, 40 and older. So, you know, that's, we believe that that's kind of what we will be seeing at the college. So can we continue, Amy? Thank you. So we're going to meet our students where they are, and we're going to keep the safest environment possible. So we've amended the student vaccination policy, communications went out about that earlier this week. The result of that policy is that a student who starts on September 1st that doesn't ask for an exemption will be vaccinated by September 30th, and if a student's in late start, that'll be, excuse my typo, that should be October 27th. I really apologize. We will have testing facilities on each campus, which is going to be provided by a new company called AccuReference, and we also will be providing vaccinations, which ties in really into some of the changes in the student policy. So we have the 14-day waiting period after your first J&amp;J or your second Pfizer/Maderna. If a student is not fully vaccinated, including if they're in that two-week waiting period, they need to provide a proof of a negative test within 24 hours each time they come to campus. If a student has only had one dose, they must provide proof of the second dose within 30 days of the start of their in-person learning, or they will be withdrawn. And then so the students with verified medical or religious exemption, so those are the two types of exemptions that are available to students, have to provide proof of a negative test within 72 hours every time they come to campus. So if you're a full-time student, you're going to need to be tested twice a week. If you're a student who's coming one day a week, you're going to be needing to provide proof of a test once a week. So we did this because, this is based on our feedback from our students about what we heard from them for them to be able to start learning with us in the fall. Thank you, Amy. If you could proceed to the next. So also, this is something that we've been working on, kind of, what does it look like when people come in the door? This will give you a sense of what our planning looks like right now, and when I say subject to change, I mean that very sincerely. But we are creating, so you'll see, for example, at night, where we have the most people coming and most students, faculty and staff, where that main entrance, right, by enrollment services, so that's going to be FastPass. So those are going to be for folks who have a green or purple sticker on their, I mean, ideally their CCRID, but that's what you get when you register your vaccine or if a student has gone through the Medicat process. The ramp is what we're going to use for screening. It's protected, it provides kind of a runway, because the screening will take a little bit longer, especially in the first couple weeks of school. As we all know, the first couple weeks is often kind of a chaotic time where students are finding their way to their classroom and everything like that. This is going to add a piece onto it, and we're, it's going to be very directive about kind of where people go, so we can get them through that as fast as possible. We're going to have the testing, if a student shows up without a test, we have the testing right outside, they're there now, under the ramp, ready to go and test that student and get them on their way so they can get in on that first day. And the lower entrance, we're going to do a combination, a lot of faculty and staff use that, so that'll be a FastPass, we'll have a FastPass part and a screening part. But that gives you an example. We've looked at the other campuses and again have tried to do the same thing, to separate screening from FastPass. It's not possible everywhere, so instead it'll be directions kind of within and once you get into the building. In Providence and Liston, we will be using the atrium areas for the screening, for the screening areas. So that will be, we'll be communicating a ton more about this so that if it is your first time coming on opening and welcome back day or, you know, on the first, that you kind of will know what to look for, what signage to look for. Okay, Amy, thank you. So what do you guys need to know as faculty and staff? So we're strongly encouraging vaccinations and are really grateful for the people who have registered their vaccinations with us. Currently, we're taking those, we can take them in a number of different ways. If you are on campus, you can come up to where Dory, who's kind of our operations person for our testing protocols and our entry, where they sit and they can take a picture of that, that is on the third floor, right next to where Delois sits. And the other thing is we have an email address of COVID-19 testing at cri.edu, so that is also a place that you can send a photograph. Right now, though, we're currently strongly encouraging the vaccination, I will say, and I've had conversations with some of the union leadership about this, there's been a lot of questions about making the vaccinations mandatory for faculty and staff. That's certainly one of the potential tools in our toolbox, and we are watching the landscape every day, and so I would say, you know, nothing, we haven't ruled out anything and are really grateful with the response that we've seen from faculty and staff so far. Masks are being required for everyone regardless of vaccination status. That is actually something we've had in place the whole time, we never dropped that requirement, and it is, will be true continuing into the fall. I talked a little bit about entry, about vaccinated and registered, that's a FastPass write-in. If you're not vaccinated, for whatever reason, there will be a screening and a temp check. We're changing our temperature checks to have be the handheld ones, that's probably the one change. We will be encouraging people to use the app that'll give you a green check as you can self-screen and come in, it'll be a little bit faster that way. And then of course, the enhanced cleaning, we'll have cleaning materials in the classrooms and doing disinfecting at the beginning and end of the day, and focused on cleaning high-traffic areas. So I believe that is my last slide. So I will hand this now back over to Amy.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Alix. I'm going to keep the screen up just for the PowerPoint. And Vice President Sarah Enright, please take the floor.
All right, thank you, Amy, and thank you, Alix. It's good to be here this morning, would always be better to see everyone, but it's nice to feel like we have this opportunity to come together as a community. So thank you for just making time. My goal today is to provide a few things, just an update as to where we are on enrollment, give you a sense of what different efforts and strategies are underway and have been underway over the past few months, and then talk a little bit about how we can come together as a community to all support enrollment really in the coming weeks. So with that, I see Amy's smile, I think that means she's bringing some slides forward for me.
I hope so. I must apologize, I am doing this from a remote location today and a little discombobulated. So if everybody can just give me a minute.
That's fine, I can talk without seeing the first slide, I can speak in theory to what people can expect to see on the first slide, and then perhaps it will magically just arrive somewhere along the way as I talk. So typically, when we talk about enrollment this time of year, it's a pretty straightforward measurement. We measure the same day, we measure this day compared to the same day last year and say, how many percentage points off are we? This year, as you'll see on the slide that we bring forward, there's a fair bit more complexity in the mix as we work not only to enroll students and make sure that their FAFSA's and payments are squared away, but also work to make sure that they are vaccinated and have shared their vaccine information with us in a timely fashion. So we are managing, I think, more data and more outreach than we normally would be at this time of year. Look at that, I figured if I just kind of kept talking, it would arrive. Thank you, Amy Kent. So we can go to the first slide, which I was just beginning to speak to.
One would hope.
So what you'll see when we get to the first slide, which we refer to as the donut slide casually at this point, it's a way of depicting our enrollment data so that we can get a sense each day of how things look and where we need to focus our energy. And...
No, I do apologize, guys, I truly apologize, I'm having...
That's okay.
Issues.
I can continue to describe what people will see when that slide comes forth. So typically, at this time of year, we'll look at enrolled, enrolled, and has their FAFSA squared away, and that's what we're looking at right now. As you can see here, thank you, Amy, we're managing different groups, so I will sort of walk you through each section of this, just so everyone can understand what we're looking at. First off, just in the upper left-hand corner, you'll see as of yesterday, we had a total of 10,000... we had a total of 10,253 students enrolled for the fall. That is against our total budgeted goal. You'll see in the center of the donut there of 13,684 students. So the entirety of this donut represents 13,684 students and how that breaks down. If we start with the dark green, you'll see, that's, that's good. That's a positive group. 3,838 students are scheduled for in-person courses and they have uploaded their vaccination card and it has been approved and they are good to go. If you go down below that group, there's another group in the green. Those are students who may or may not have uploaded vaccination information, but they are planning to be exclusively online students or registered for exclusively online courses. That's another 2,924 students. We also each day have a small subsection of our students. You'll see that sliver in green up top of 256 students. Those are students who are planning to attend in person, but we are waiting for MedICAT, our student health portal vendor, to review the cards that those students have uploaded. It takes a few days for them to just get eyes on every card and make sure that they are in fact verified. So that's, that's the good side of this chart. That's the side that makes us smile each day as it grows. And now I want to talk about where things get trickier. As we move into the orange, we have more than 3,000 students who are all registered, planning to take in-person courses, and they have not uploaded any vaccination documentation. So we don't know a lot about that group at this point. It's our great hope that they are, for the most part, in the process of getting their vaccination and just need to upload it. But we are doing an enormous amount of outreach because that's a group that's at risk. If you do not get vaccinated and upload that information, you will not be able to attend in-person classes. So that orange slice is new. That's a whole new group that we are managing in terms of outreach, communication, sharing the process and day over day trying to make a dent in that figure. We'll skip the red for now. I'm going to come back to that. But I'll just call your attention to the 56% of students registered for in-person classes are compliant. So if you look at that dark green and the orange, that's the population of students who we can expect to have on campus this fall. And just over half of them today are compliant with the vaccination requirement. So we've got work ahead of us. We also, as we always do this time of year, have work ahead of us to continue enrolling students. That is what the red section represents. We are 3,431 students off of our goal. That is pretty massive. That's, you know, last year was a very tough year for us. We worked hard to get to 7% behind the fall of 2019. And we are currently 13% behind where we were this time last year. So we're going to keep working day over day. We are right now enrolling 113 students a day over the last seven days. That's our average figure. So if we continue at that pace, we'll get to about 12,000 students enrolled and expect to be about 12% off of last year, which is certainly not where I would like to be, but I think is manageable in this environment and likely to be in line with many peer institutions. So I think that the Division of Student Affairs has been hustling all summer, working incredibly hard, working in partnership with marketing, working in partnership with Academic Affairs to put a dent in that red. I think I'd ask you to just hold that orange slice in your minds because we're going to come back and talk about what it can look like for us to really own that as a community. I also think the piece that we're always working on this time of year, if you look to the left, is we have many students who are still working their way through financial aid payment plans, et cetera, to make sure that they're not only enrolled, but they are paid to attend classes. So I can share in a moment some of the things that we're doing to work with that group and make sure that they are able to stick because they really cut across every shade of green and that orange. And we'll be working through that as well. But that is in as succinct a fashion, I guess, as I can share the enrollment update at this juncture. I think we've got really two things that we are up against. One is vaccination is a very new challenge for us and not insignificant. And two is, given all the challenges of the pandemic, we are still trending behind just enrollment generally. So with that, Amy, if you want to go to the next slide, I can talk about what we are doing as an institution. I think sometimes, and I've had this conversation with so many folks, you know, together at enrollment days or late-night conversations with Amy Kasterek or Bob Sapola saying like, what, what are we missing? What more do we need to do? How do we, how do we make a dent? And I think the reality is, we are doing a lot and it is a challenging environment. So there's been a pretty aggressive enrollment drive underway all through the summer. It has been multi-faceted, multi-pronged. It has covered virtual information sessions, some robust enrollment days that you can see a couple tiny pictures of on the right, in-person services, online services, quite a bit of advertising, quite a bit of text and email outreach, and some really great partnership. Thank you to the department chairs who might be with us today to dynamically adapt and flex and get more online course offerings for that light green share of students that we saw on the donut just now. And late start courses, which really was successful for us last year and helped us to close the gap. And we hope to see the same this year. So a lot going on in that space. The vaccine push, I feel like this has been an iterative and adaptive effort from the moment we introduced the vaccine mandate to getting a new health portal live, offering clinics, creating an advertisement just last week featuring a whole host of CRI students, getting that out on social media. A lot going on in that space as well. And then payment relief. I think that, here's what I'll say on payment. If you have a student who's in your class, at your desk, calling or texting you, who can't find a way to pay for CRI this fall and that's their barrier, send them our way. I mean, I do think that we have more funding at our disposal to support students than ever before. And a lot of it is just sort of matching students with the funding streams that we have available because they're all a little bit different and they have requirements. But we do have quite a bit of funding through HERF, through GEAR, through our foundation and some of the fundraising that we've done over the past year. We have forgiven more than $2 million in debt, prior debt for students because sometimes that's a barrier to returning. And we have offered a whole lot of FAFSA workshops, in-person and virtually, to try to ease the burden of that. We've also pushed out our payment date, so we haven't been dropping people throughout the summer. We've really been hanging on and, and working with each student. So I guess as I look at all this, I, I will just say thank you. Every bit of this is sort of hard fought in this slide. I think represents the collective effort of an entire college coming together. So while I think it's easy to be disappointed in the numbers that we see on the slide that I just shared, I think we have a lot to be proud of and a lot to continue pushing on. I think if you talk to a four-year institution, the idea that we're talking about still pushing and still enrolling students with two weeks to go is a little bit mind-blowing. But I think with these efforts in play and the continued pushing, I do feel confident that while we're probably not, we're almost certainly not going to hit our 13,684 goal, I do think we're going to continue to close the gap and make headway if we continue pushing on all these levers. So with that, I think we can go to the next slide because there's really one lever that I think is just ours to own as a community because here we are in a pandemic. And frankly, I think it's going to take all of us to just figure this out. So the orange slice represents those more than 3,000 students who are planning to take in-person classes and have not yet uploaded their vaccination information. What I have found personally to work is every single time I'm in a communication with a student about anything, I weave in, by the way, just a reminder that we have a vaccination requirement this fall to attend in-person classes. Are you vaccinated? Did you upload your card? And that works. Some students, that works on the first try, they say, yeah, sure, right, remind, we are to upload. And some students, it becomes like, no, I've been thinking about it. And then I send them the link to the next available vaccination clinic. So I think that if we're going to close a gap of 3,200 students in that orange slice in this two-week period of time, it's going to be incredibly helpful for us all to be working on this together. I know that I touch frankly, not that many students in a day personally, but when I think about, I'm looking, there are 266 participants on this call right now. 266 of us in a day touch a lot of students. So if we can all be perhaps more proactive and even a little bit more aggressive than maybe we're naturally inclined to be, it can be a little awkward. Now I'm used to it. But I will say the first couple of times that I inserted vaccination in a student conversation or a student text that had nothing to do with vaccination, it felt awkward. I have now normed it. And I would say if we can all start doing that today, that will go a long way over the next couple of weeks. So with that, I feel like I have talked a lot. But my hope in so doing is that we all have a shared understanding of where we are, a bit of pride and confidence in the work that we have underway and a sense that we can come together to address that orange slice, which I think is really important. And I do think is going to frankly, take all of us to, to make an impact on. So thanks. I will turn it back to Amy.
Thank you, Vice President Enright. So we are going to get started with questions. Before I do, I just wanted to touch upon one thing that Alix mentioned with regards to opening day next Thursday and the ability of our faculty and staff, if they have not already done so, to provide their vaccination information. So opening day really is going to be for the, an event for the first time that many faculty are coming to campus and particularly the night campus for department meetings to provide their vaccination card. So they should bring their card with them. We will have tables set up at the entry point with folks there that can help you, you know, upload that information and provide that information and then give you a little sticker for your CRI ID. And that will allow you to fast pass or easy pass the next time you come to campus. So I would just suggest and ask that arrive to campus early next Thursday for opening day. If this is the first time that you are coming to, to the night campus. It will also be really important to get that information so that on the first day of the fall semester, which you know is chaotic to begin with, and we have thousands of students that are going to be coming on into our buildings, the many, the more people, our faculty and our staff, that we can get to use the easy pass and the fast pass, the quicker we will be able to bring those students into the building. And if you have any questions on what information you need to provide or if you need a college ID, just, I believe, Alix, if you want to share that email address again.
It's covid-19 testing at ccri.edu. Thank you, Amy, for that additional important descriptive information about, about the 26th.
Great. Okay, so why don't we get started with the questions? And the most common question that we've received is, and I think, Alix, you touched upon this, is why are we requiring our students to be vaccinated but not our faculty and staff? If you can just give a little bit of background on how we came to that decision.
So I think that we've tried to look at this at each, at each moment as we've learned more information about the, the steps that we can take to ensure that we're providing the safest environment on our campuses as possible. When we put in the mandate for students, it was very much in line with what other higher eds were doing across the state and frankly, across the country. It is, it is, it was true then and it's still true now that that group of people, that age group actually has a lower vaccination rate than other age groups in the state. And so we believe that by putting in the mandate for students, that one of the things that we would be doing is creating an incentive for students to get vaccinated, which would benefit our goal of having the safest learning environment possible. I, you know, again, as we've come back to, I mentioned, we've strongly encouraged faculty and staff. We believe that there is a vaccination rate that's similar to the state in just by age group alone. And I, and it's, you know, I would say, as I said before, it's not off the table as a tool in our toolbox that we would at some point, you know, require faculty and staff to get vaccinated. It's something that, should we pursue that route? There'd be conversations with our local union leadership. I, you know, we right now have exemptions for students. So, you know, we would provide, I believe that we would end up providing the same exemptions for faculty and staff as well as lead time for faculty and staff to become compliant. So should that happen, there are conversations that will be had in the future. And we're just paying very close attention and continuing to be in touch with the Department of Health and with our sister institutions.
Thank you. So one, another very frequent question that we have received is, with the Delta variant and the increase in the number of cases of the last couple of weeks, is the college or does the college have a plan for having to go back to remote? If the situation requires it or more hybrid approaches? Well, I guess what are the benchmarks that the college looks at when making a decision like that?
So I, I guess I would, I would frame it this way is, I keep coming back to the changing circumstances. We, we talk to the Department of Health at least twice a week as we're monitoring the landscape around us. And here's what I do know. We have the ability to go to a remote learning because we've done it before. And frankly, everyone on this call, everyone throughout the college was part of making that happen. And, and we learned a lot through it. So we absolutely have the capability because we've already done it. I don't think, you know, I don't think anyone, no matter where you sit in this college, is looking at, at the fall and listening to what's happening without thinking that there, there's a chance we might have to change our approach. And what we would do is we would, we would be responsive to the health authorities in the state and we would make it happen. And it would take all of us, just like it did before, but I know that we can do it.
Great. Thank you. Sarah, we have a question. So in terms of enrollment, I think a number of people, I think, with us having been remote and online, online modality for so long, initially, we had talked about 70% in-person and 30% online. Where are we today? And did we find that a number of students, more students than we expected, have chosen online options?
Yeah, we, we did find as soon as course registration opened and then following that pattern over the first few weeks or month of registrations that more students desired exclusively online classes than we had anticipated. So we have been working in partnership with Academic Affairs over the course of the summer to shift and have more online offerings. We're now closer to 40% online sections and 60% in-person sections. I think the exact figure as of yesterday was 38, 62. So we did end up going beyond that 30, 70 mix that we had originally envisioned. And we may, we're still continuing to add a small number of sections as we look at that late start. And we may continue to add some more onlines into that late start. But yes, we definitely saw more demand than we had originally anticipated and, and worked over the summer to, to adapt based on that.
And if I, if I can follow up to that question, Sarah. So of those, those orange, of that pie chart of those orange students that aren't yet enrolled and of those light green students that have not uploaded their vaccination cards, how quickly or what is the ability of the college to transition as many of those students to online classes to keep them enrolled? But, you know, recognition that they have not been compliant with the vaccination mandate?
That's a good question. We are certainly going to try and do our very best, which is, I think, why I'm sort of really hoping that we're all communicating soon and quickly and constantly with students around the vaccine piece because then we're able to identify the student who says, no way, I'm not getting vaccinated, like, that's not my plan. Then we can have the conversation and transition that student to online. So I think the sooner we're having those conversations, the better because it allows us to get them a course schedule that works. I also think that we experienced this with everything over the course of the summer, including typically FAFSA's but other pieces as well, where students aren't really engaged in whatever we're communicating over the course of the summer. And a couple of days before classes begin, they wake up to whatever the expectations or requirements are. And I do think that's part of why we'll be offering vaccination during that first week of classes. So that we expect there will be plenty of students who are willing to get vaccinated if they realize it's a requirement, and we will do that. But to answer your very specific question of will we provide online opportunities? We will as much as we possibly can. And I still think that that won't meet every single student's needs.
needs.
Okay, thank you. Alix, we did receive some questions with the amended vaccine policy and with the allowable exemptions. There will be students in classrooms that are vaccinated, mid-vaccination, or exempt with no vaccination. Can you talk a little bit about what the classroom experience will look like? Will there be social distancing required or reduced number of students? Or will there need to be vaccinated students, I hate to say, on one side and mid-vax or exemption students on the other? How will that classroom experience look for our faculty members?
So yes, we've always known that we would have students who selected an exemption on campus.
Did Alix freeze for anybody else?
Oh dear.
Now you're back.
I'm back? Okay, great. Don't know when I froze. So we always have known that with the student, with the vaccine mandate for students, that we would have some unvaccinated students in the classroom because they opted for one of the two exemptions. That is why we're doing two things. If you come onto campus, you need to show proof of a negative test every time, and everyone's going to be masked. So we will, our class size will be our class size, but we're creating, you know, a level or playing field by making sure that people have present negative tests and everyone stays masked in the classroom, in addition to the cleaning supplies we'll have and everything like that.
And if I can follow up, I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, there is an expectation we'll ask all the faculty to remind students that when they first come into class, to use the, the cleaning supplies to wipe down their desk area, their workspace, and then also when they get up to leave for the class, to make sure that they wipe down their space for the next class as well. And then there will be, you know, enhanced cleaning throughout the campuses and the classrooms every night.
That's right.
Okay, great, thank you. If we could stay on this classroom experience, so unfortunately, there may be times when either a student tests positive or a faculty member tests positive, whether or not they are vaccinated or not. And so to, to maintain that continuity in the classroom and that learning experience, you talk about what options are available, like, will there be hybrid options? Will the class have to go remote? What options are available to ensure that our faculty members can teach safely, but also that our students have that continuity of learning?
I think that, I'm looking at Sarah, I think that I have a piece of this that maybe Sarah does as well. So I think it would, so first of all, I would start with, it would depend on the circumstances because what, what would happen is that we would, other, we know from that person testing here that they tested positive, but remember, they have to show a negative test before they walk in the door. So if we've, if we find out, whether it's from the Department of Health or our internal operations, that someone tested positive, we would immediately go to doing things like looking at the class roster and determining if there was anyone in there with an exemption. Because remember, if you're vaccinated, the, the current, the guidance from the Department of Health is that you do not need to quarantine. So it would really depend on the circumstances within that classroom, whether it was a faculty member, whether it was a student, what the close, what the setup of the classroom was in that very particular room, before we made a determination about what to do next. So that's, that's just kind of a, the, the beginning part of, I think, the analysis that we would need to go through in terms of response with a class going to a remote or hybrid situation. We do have 55 classrooms that are currently outfitted to be, for a hybrid experience, and we would absolutely figure out how to use those resources in order to continue the class going, again, kind of, or getting a student to be able to come into the classroom remotely.
Great, thank you. And Sarah, did you have anything that you wanted to follow up with?
Yeah, I think Alix covered it.
Okay, great. One of the other, the second most common question that we received is, will the college consider looking at or rolling out a remote work policy?
So I'm happy to answer that. So we, we have been working on a remote work policy. I call it the future of work, remote work policy, because it is, what it contemplates is employees who can and who through various approvals can work. Right now, it's, you know, considering one or two days from home. We're still working on that. There's more to come on that. But I really would encourage people to think about that as the future of our work. It's taking what we've learned from this experience and applying it to how we think about retaining and recruiting, retaining our people, recruiting new, great people to come here. I see that as separate, very much so, from the circumstances that we are sometimes facing now, where either someone feels sick and has to stay at home, whether someone has an exposure and has to stay home. That's our response to a very specific, to our, it's our COVID response. It's different from having a set work schedule that has you at home a couple of days a week. So, and I just really, we're, we're absolutely working and on it and thinking about it and talking with our union leadership about the future of work, remote work policy, and, you know, have our work, have, you know, a set of steps that we go through depending on the circumstance that might come about because of the specific situation that we are in with COVID. So I hope that's clear, kind of the distinction, because I think it's important. And I think, you know, I think the future of work piece of it is potentially really an exciting option to offer employees and potential future employees.
Great. And if people, if employees do have questions with regards to COVID-related requirements to work remotely or to stay home, who should they contact?
So here's, here's, I think that's a very good question. First, they should go to their supervisor, because at the end of the day, the supervisor and HR are going to need to talk to each other to see if it's possible for that person to work from home effectively, given what their job is, given, I mean, if they're not feeling well, that, that might preclude them from being able to perform work at home. So it's circumstance is specific, but the first best stop really is a supervisor, and then to have the supervisor reach out to HR to say, my employees brought this to me. I need help. Here are the facts, here's what the responsibilities are. Help me talk through this so, so that I can give some direction back to the employee about what they should be doing during this time that the other feel sick or, or are quarantining pending based on an exposure.
Great, thank you. I recognize that it's just 10:29. I think if we can get maybe one or two more questions in, and they will hopefully be brief. And Sarah and Alix, I think you can both take this. So we've talked a lot about in-person and in-remote, or in-person and online students and the vaccination mandate or the exemption. What can you share about students who may be strictly online but come to campus to use the academic computer lab, the library, to meet an advisor, and other student services? Will they be required to show proof of vaccination to come onto campus for whatever reason? And/or will they also be able to require to get that test before they walk into campus if they have not registered their vaccination?
So they, I didn't want to interrupt Sarah. So if they're, if a student's coming onto campus, we're going to want to see them get tested. Remember, they can do that right on campus before they come in. It takes 15 minutes, and they're going to be screened, and they're going to need to wear masks.
Great, thank, thank you. I think that answers it. We did have questions that we did not get to, but I recognize that we all have a very busy schedule and a busy day ahead of us. We will continue to work through these questions and provide answers in CC Daily, and again, if appropriate, respond directly to the employee. Before we go, I just want to thank everybody for being here. And just, you know, a reminder about next Thursday's opening day. We are really looking forward to seeing so many of you back on campus. We have planned food trucks, fun activities, and really a time for all of us to come together and really just for the first time in a long time, see one another, spend time with one another, and, and kick off the semester correctly. Megan, anything you would like to add before we get on with our day?
No, just appreciate how many people made time to, to listen, and thank everyone who submitted questions, and just echo what I heard from everyone, starting with Amy. Really looking forward to seeing everyone. The Alix-Sarah combo of the importance of doing whatever we can to get the word out to our students about the importance of getting vaccinated. And then finally, us, we as employees, uploading that vaccine information so that we can make this process as streamlined as humanly possible when we come back for in-person classes. So thank you to everybody. Thank you, Amy, for coordinating this, and to everybody that made today happen, and enjoy the Thursday, and see everybody next Thursday. Thanks, everyone.